So what happened to our attorney? I said, what happened to our attorney?
There he is.
All right, is everybody ready? Say you're ready back there. Okay, I call to order the Roseville Board of Commissioners Workshop Session on May 17, 2022. We got four items on the agenda for tonight from this work session. Appreciate the people that come to join us and also the folks that will be watching online once we get it posted in the next day or two. As you can see, to my left, Commissioner, Commissioner Mellie is not here right now, but she is on the way. She has some issues with some documents, but she will be here. And Commissioner Austin is on a trip celebrating his graduation, I think. So he will be joining us in spirit, but not in, not in person tonight. So with that, I think, I think we'll get on with the agenda unless someone has some open comments to make. Not hearing any from the board. Lisa, I think you have first up bereavance leave policy.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
As you may remember, back in March of this year, I conducted a study of benefits offered by neighboring municipalities. And one of the things that I found as a result of that was something that caught my attention. It was our bereavement leave policy as compared to other folks in the area. Currently, our policy allows us to use up to three days of our sick leave in the event of the death of an immediate family member. But that is not a true benefit to us because having to use our accrued leave, that's something that we accrue, it carries over. However, a true bereavement leave benefit does none of that. So it is my presentation to you, my request of you, that you have a discussion regarding a true bereavement leave policy. And the policy that I am proposing is five days of town paid leave in the event of the death of an immediate family member. Now, generally, people who offer that benefit, they offer three days. There's one municipality, one neighboring municipality that does offer either 40 hours or 42 hours, depending on whether or not it's a general position or a law enforcement position. But as I was thinking about diversity, not everyone practices the same rituals that we do. One example, me being a black person. Ordinarily, if someone in our circle passes, they're not buried in three days. It might be a week, week and a half later. And I'm sure there are other, other ethnicities that may be somewhat similar to that. So I figured as a way to embrace diversity and support staff, which is, is one of, one of our goals, that's why I proposed the five days. And I'm just requesting that you consider that.
What is, do we, do we have defined what is immediate family?
Yes. It is spouse, child, sibling, parent, grandparent, grandchild, or the various combinations of step, half, and in-law. In the proposal that I made, I did include in loco parentis. And that means someone who stands in place of a parent because some folks are not raised by a mother or a father. Some folks may be raised by someone else. Me, for example, I raised my goddaughter. She's not my biological daughter, but I raised her. So that would be in loco parentis. And that's something that's included in, in the draft policy.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So you said five days, right?
Yes.
There are some faiths that go longer than five days for bereavement, such as in the Jewish community. So how would that work, especially when they're, when they're, oh my God, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank. Like the Jewish faith. You know what I mean? That's seven days.
In that instance, individuals would be able to pull from either their sick leave or their vacation leave.
They'd have a choice?
Yes, it depends on what they have available. Some folks may not have any sick leave yet left, and they can pull from the vacation leave.
And if they don't have any?
Now...
I know that's a rare case, especially, well, I'm not going to assume anything, but it wasn't rare to have that culture, say, in a state where I was raised at. But I know we're talking about Roseville, but you know, things change and evolve.
Right. And that's why I stretched it a little bit from three days to five days. However, if you would like to consider more, I mean, that, that would totally be up to you. We would be setting a trend, however.
What do our employees start with vacation days, regarding vacation days?
One day a month.
Okay.
And it goes up with your length of service.
How did they just start it, like, a month prior?
True, yeah.
Then I guess they, if they had to go into it, they would take leave without pay?
Right.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
And there are stipulations in that faith for that as well. So, but I, I was just curious when I read that.
For communities that do five days, effectively, it is a seven day period because you have five workdays, plus you will cover at least two weekend days. And if it's Monday through Friday, in theory, it's nine days.
Oh, if you add the weekend in there as additional two days, because I thought the weekend would be seven days.
Well, you do have some folks, like law enforcement, who work on weekends. Any other questions?
In comparing to other local communities, this is pretty close to what others have today?
Yes, there was one other, and I can't remember which municipality it was, there was one other who also, who had a policy exactly like our current policy, allowing the employees to pull from their sick time to cover the absence.
Only one other one, you said? Everybody else has a separate bereavement policy?
Correct, everybody else has a separate bereavement leave policy.
And you said only one other municipality has five days?
Correct.
Which one was that?
Wake Forest. They have either 40 hours or 42 hours, whether it's general employee or law enforcement.
I think it's a good policy, and I'm glad you took diversity into consideration. And obviously, with all of the competition we have in the county, just in the county, it's nice to be able to offer something that's a little higher level. So I think that's a good thing. And obviously, the question about if someone needed extra days, you always have leadership that has some discretion, I would hope, to work with people when things happen, especially new employees coming on board. So hopefully, there's some discretion there allowed.
Most definitely.
And then some, some people have to figure travel in.
Right.
They may have a day to and from travel or something.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Should that be to put on consent agenda next meeting?
So how is that going to read as it is right now? It's going to read this way?
Yes.
But for anybody who needs additional days, they would either, I'm sorry, making so much noise, they would have to dip into their paid time law for sick time?
Yes.
If they have it, or, or was it, just take a day without pay?
Yes, that's included in the policy.
So I guess I'm just going to ask one more time.
Okay.
So for somebody who's practices shiva, those seven days, and somebody could die on a Sunday, and their faith is that they're buried right away, which sometimes doesn't happen. So when you count those seven days out, if they need those extra days, based on what Commissioner Sutton said, would there be some discretion for that, or is it up in the air? How do you, how do you do that?
Yes, and the time does not have to be taken consecutively. It can be taken intermittently. In fact, when my grandmother passed, she passed on a Tuesday, she was not buried until the following Thursday. So I took that Tuesday off, and then the following Wednesday and Thursday for my three days.
I'm, I'm probably in a fog. Three days or five days?
The example that I'm using was myself when we had three days.
Okay.
The proposed policy is for five days.
Okay.
So if we had, if this policy pertained to us today, and this was a policy that we have adopted, if my grandmother passed on a Tuesday, but she was not buried until the following week, the following Thursday, then I would have taken that Tuesday. And then I would have taken the days the following week, but I would only have taken one day the week that she actually passed. So it was an intermittent leave.
Okay.
I personally am fine with it being on the consent agenda. What was that? I said, I'm, I personally am fine with it being on the consent agenda.
Same.
I too.
Thank you very much.
HR stuff, are you up there?
Very, very busy. We had our benefits fair yesterday for our insurance. The majority of employees attended. We had some vendors there, we had Wake Med there, they were checking blood pressure. We had someone from the league, she went over all of the benefits that we have for the upcoming year. We also had someone from my group, they administer our EAP program. So they provided the employees with some very, very good information, and I was proud of the turnout.
Very good. Under EAP, do they provide an opportunity to get a will done? Is there a financial component?
Our EAP provider does some of everything. I was amazed by all of the stuff that they offer. But yes, there's a financial component. There's, of course, mental health component, there's a physical wellness component, all of that.
Awesome.
They even assist supervisors if they have to have difficult conversations with employees, but they, they do a lot.
Awesome.
Nice.
That's great.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, next item, update and review of the commercial growth feasibility study. Michael, that one is yours, I think?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Pull up a PowerPoint here. And staff would like to just provide an update tonight on the recent study to determine the feasibility for commercial development along the 401 bypass. And I printed out some, some of the key maps in the study and the report for, just for easier viewing.
Thank you.
And they're at your desk. Just to get started here, just wanted to take some time to kind of review where we've been and then talk about possible options moving forward and seek some guidance from the board on, on next steps. I'll just briefly touch on why the study was conducted, scope of the project, what did we learn, what did we hear, and kind of those next steps and pathways forward. But first, just a kind of a quick reminder why we did this study. And I included this information in the packets as well. Our tax base is heavily residential, as, as you know, and as you can see in this chart here, I included this chart, a comparison chart of all the different towns in Wake County. And you can see here, the, kind of the commercial and residential tax base ratio. And here we have with Roseville, 92% residential and 8% commercial, and that's the lowest in the entire county, if you look at some of these other towns. What, you know, Wake Forest, Fuquay Arena, they, they have a, they have a pretty good mix. While each town is kind of different in their own way, when I've come across people in economic development, they've kind of set a healthy mix as a 75, 25, 60, 40, you know, 16 or 75 on the residential side, and then that 25 all the way up to 40, commercial side. Again, just to bring in that, that revenue. And I also included some other comparison charts here. I wanted to show some examples really of the tax revenue that, you know, a large business park or large industrial site, or industrial sized project might bring in. And first here, you can kind of see Roseville, our number one taxpayer in 2021 is actually Storage Max, bringing in about $35,000. And then you got a couple more here. Ashton Raleigh Residential is the Point Development, so that's all residential, the 800 homes that are going in. Mitchell Mill is the Kales Falls, they own the property there where Kales Falls is going in. And then Redford Plaza is the Food Lion Place, number four. And then I included all the way down there, at the bottom there, 16 is Cobblestone Crossing is starting to bring in some tax, tax revenue, $14,000. But I showed this just to kind of show Roseville, and then I wanted to switch over to show in Zebulon, their top taxpayer of 2021 was GlaxoSmithKline, bringing in almost 1.5 million a year in tax revenue. And this is a, about 690 square feet, a site in Zebulon, the building's about 690,000 square feet, sorry. On about 200 acres. So that kind of gives you an idea of what, you know, we're thinking about, what we can attract here and thinking about parcels. And so that's a 200 acre site and 690,000 square feet.
What type of site is that, Michael? Is, are there employees there? Is it industrial, what?
Yes, I believe, there are employees there. I don't...
A manufacturing plant.
Okay.
Yeah. Right there near, I think it's near 64, kind of driving through. And then Truist Bank, it's not just the bank there, but they also have facility, and this is on, this is on 50 acres, and it's about 122,000 square foot building. I don't know exactly what they're doing there, but Truist Bank brings in, you know, 1.1 million every year in tax revenue. So I thought that was interesting.
Probably full closure. Red MC or something.
Well, I think that's the old BB and T, that's their data, the data center.
I was going to say operations.
Okay. It's like a big data center. So are they leaving then, or are they no, no longer there? Or became, it was BB and T? Yeah, it became Truist, yep. Yep. And then just flipping over to Holly Springs real quick, some of you might have heard of Securus. So they're the biomanufacturing company that manufactures the flu vaccine, and they have a 557,000 square foot building on about 158 acres. And you can see the tax revenue that they're bringing in, 1.375 annually. So just some examples of a Glaxo, you know, GSK, or a Securus, some of these, you know, life science, biotechnology firms that are, that are producing this tax revenue in these, these towns. And that's kind of why, you know, why are we doing this study? Why did we want to see if we can attract commercial development to Roseville? So the study was organized into four parts. You know, the study area itself was, was identified based on our comprehensive plan, previously calling out this, this general area south along the bypass for future mixed use development or business park development. And we kind of set out to ask this question, you know, is this area, is this a place where non-residential development could occur someday? And we, we organized it in four parts, we did a market analysis to determine the, you know, could this area, you know, support industrial and commercial land uses? We did a site analysis of the natural features and the utilities, and those are all in the report there, those different maps. The consultants put together kind of some concepts and some master planning, bubble diagrams, they called them, where you can kind of see a vision of what the future could look like, just one version. And we'll talk more about those in a second. And then they finished up the report with an action plan or recommendations for kind of what we could do next, or where we could take this next. So I'm here to answer any questions tonight, but some of those technical questions, I might have to get back with the consultant. They've kind of wrapped up their contract with us, and so we didn't invite them back here tonight, but we can always have them back again as well if, if we so desire. But I'll do my best to answer the questions you might have. So what did we find out? You know, while, while a lot of, you know, this was just really a high, high level analysis, and a lot more needs to be done, basically, you know, this area is suitable for commercial industrial growth. They found that the majority of the acreage is, is buildable, doesn't mean it's not going to come with a cost and stuff, infrastructure doesn't have to be put in, but this was a generally a good area from a high level analysis to attract future commercial and industrial growth. The conclusions from the market study was that Roseville is in a good location, and we have the qualified workforce to recruit and target the, the industries that, that Wake County itself kind of targets, and that's IT and technology, the life sciences sector, as well as clean tech or smart grid technology, that's kind of the renewable energy, or the environmental, you know, conscious companies, and then also advanced manufacturing. So that's kind of what the market analysis concluded. And I wanted to share just a few words from Jim Nichols. I, I included an email that he sent me, he's one of our consultants on this project, heading up the Economic Development Team at, at O'Brien Atkins. And he kind of sent an email, and I just wanted to include a few words. He said, because he couldn't be here tonight. And he says in that email that's in your packets, "Roseville is an extremely attractive community for quality of life, talent, housing availability, quality of schools, location, and many other factors that clients seek. Once you have these quality sites just off of the US 401 bypass secured and in the process of certification, then I believe you are going to see multiple projects coming your way. Please share with your leadership team that there is pent up demand for large 100 to 200 acre sites in our region. Your timing to bring these online could be very good, and I highly recommend staying in close contact with local and state developers." And you can read a little bit more of what he says there in that email. And just moving along, we did want to take some time, I think we last brought this to the board March 1st, and we had talked about kind of seeking some feedback from the community. We put this out online on our website and social media and asked the community for any input and feedback. Really didn't get much from the general public. I think there was one person that responded to me from the general public. But addition to that, I've been in close contact with the property owners in the study area. We held two separate meetings with them, one in November and in February. And I've been in close contact with a few of them all along the way. And so I included some of that feedback, kind of paraphrasing some of their feedback that I received over the last couple of months, and that's also in your packets. I kind of just...
Is it in the report?
No.
So, and that's, I guess that's a question, I know we saw the report several months ago, and then we got all this feedback, even Plan B, what I think gave feedback on it.
Yep.
But I never saw the report modified at all from day one, except for what?
Right.
What was changed? Anything, anything in the report changed?
Not since we received some of that feedback. So that could be something that we could ask the consultants to incorporate somewhere into the...
So what were we planning to do with the feedback if we didn't put it in the report?
Well, we, I did share that with the consultants, and they were going to take that and see, determine what made sense, what kind of, what kind of feedback made sense to incorporate back into the study now? What feedback made more sense to be addressed at a later time when we got further along, or if the study were to be accepted? You know, a lot of the feedback just was, I, I kind of highlighted some of it here. Everybody thought that developing a plan was smart, whether they agreed with it wholeheartedly or not, like it was good to at least have a plan. Some of the different landowners were on board for the plan. Some others had a desire to, to not sell their land and preserve the natural environment as long as they were around. And then others, some of their properties are actually for sale right now, and they understood that planning was important, but just didn't know how long they could hold off, and they might need to sell sooner rather than later to, to a, to a buyer.
Do you have a markup of that, what you just said, those that are for sale, those that are willing to hold off? Do you have a mark of, of that in your office to show?
Who?
Who and what looks, is still maybe available?
Yes, I can provide that to some extent. And which, which sort of parcels or landowners are saying which kind of feedback?
Yes, that's what I'd like to know.
Yeah. And, and in your packets too, to some, I was able to, I, I didn't kind of use names, but I, I think I said it as Site 20, or owner of Site 20?
Yes.
Said this, or owner...
Oh, wait, I missed that one.
So you can kind of see to some extent what some of that is.
Is that by the colors of green, orange, and red?
No. If you're looking at, well, yeah, if you're looking at that first map?
Okay.
The numbers of the sites. And then in the packet, how I organized the feedback, I, I think I said either the real estate broker representing the property of the site, or the...
I saw that, but I didn't put those two together because it wasn't like right there beside it.
Right, sorry.
So I'm like, okay, what does that mean? Okay, okay, okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
So does the red mean that people are not selling?
Nope.
That does not mean that, or it does mean that?
It, yeah, it doesn't mean it. The colors don't mean anything in terms of correlation to who's selling or not.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought, my bad. So why are they in color, just to show the different lots?
The, the colors on that first property, yes, were just to identify, they don't have any, there was no reason for that other than to separate the parcels. And then as you get further into the study, you start to see different zoning suggestions and things like that.
You said that there was some feedback from the public online? You said you had one person respond? Was it kind of in line with what you have from the landowners, or was it different?
It was a resident in a nearby neighborhood that just had concerns, and let me see. So in your, yeah, in your packets, if you see under that feedback sheet, it's one comment from general pub, public in the Carlton Point neighborhood. Page...
Thank you.
That is, it's two pages, it's called feedback from landlords of so...
There we go. There we go.
Yes, thank you. It seemed like a general concern about development coming around the Carlton Point neighborhood, and there's a mention of the public's coming in close and things like that.
So 26 is the, wait, Site 1. Is that, that, that's the one that's like 1,000 square feet?
Site 1...
Or would that be Site 24, since it's...
Site 1 is that big one on the western side of the study.
Is that the one that's like, I'm looking, is that the one that's like 1,000 square feet? I just want to get...
Yeah.
That's it? Not 24?
Yeah, I think...
I can tell you the acreage, or...
Oh, never mind, because that, that must be acreage. Never mind, never mind. Okay, I'm sorry, carry on.
I think this is, this is a lot, this is alike, a lot of things that we do. We don't get much public feedback now, but I can tell you probably, if we pluck a big industrial building, you know, surrounded by residential on three sides, with streets stubbed out in there. by residential on three sides with streets stubbed out in there, we will get feedback.
Ronnie, what road is this?
That's bypass. That's when, that's when the feedback will come.
Yeah, I'm really interested in the Site 24, 26, because those are saying they want to preserve natural environment. And how does that affect the road going through there that was proposed? I mean, I know it's not exact, but it looks like it would hit, it looks like it would go through 24, right between 24 and 26, I guess.
So then I'm definitely at a loss on the road. Which road is this?
So it'd be another alley.
This is the bypass?
Yeah.
This right here?
So it'd be like, this is the proposed one.
26, yeah.
So right there.
Yeah, so what is this road?
So this is 20, that's Roseville Road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's something we have to think about. That Fowler Road extension is in our approved community transportation plan as well, so.
Yeah, Fowler Road extension would go right through 26, so.
You know, the big building, like on this third page of the handout that we've gotten with the proposed mock-up site plan, the larger buildings, in my opinion, my, just my opinion.
The larger buildings or the larger lots?
The larger buildings, the 500,000 square foot, 800 square foot, 750,000 square foot. I think, as the gentleman stated in the email that you read, he's a professional and he knows what is out there and what's hot. And I think that IT is huge and then also the renewable energy. And if this is tucked away in a beautiful little area surrounded by trees, you know, it's not a big metal building sticking out, can we not still bring it to Roseville? Do you know what I'm saying? I think aesthetically it could be very pleasing, but it could also be a great move for Roseville to bring those much needed and much, since we have possible, could potentially have the land and space for those buildings. I think it would be a great thing for Roseville.
Yeah, I think our biggest thing we need to look at first are Sites 25 and Site 1. Because 25 is mentioning, you know, that they're open to now and they're right along Roseville Road, but you still got to get there. And Site 1 is one of the biggest ones, so I feel like-
But also, I guess it depends on who's looking.
Right, yeah.
And who's willing to sell all at the same time.
Yeah. And a lot of this is really not a linear process where you just kind of, you know, something might be out there for sale or a, you know, a life sciences firm could call tomorrow and say, hey, we're looking at, we're trying to find 200 acres and-
What I would hate if, I would not like to see, you know, Site 1 is a very, very much the gateway property from, from this, from the south into town. I would hate someone that wants to develop that with great mixed use with, you know, things like even, even Whole Foods or Trader Joe's or something we want, then we say, no, our plan doesn't call for you to put that there. I would hate for that to happen.
That brings me to my next slide of, we want to kind of explore that option a little bit. That was some of the feedback, you know, that the mayor's mentioning. You know, we went out and visited Commissioner Sutton and the mayor and I and some staff visited the Park West Village Mixed Use Development in Morrisville and kind of toured that and spoke with the developers. So something that came up in discussion was could, like the mayor was saying, could this, in this encircled area here where the consultants kind of put a larger building and saw this as industrial, a potential for industrial development or life sciences or something bigger, there was discussion about, could that be included in more of the mixed use? You see all the blue buildings to the south and on that second map and those three maps I gave you, could, could that bubble of activity zone be expanded to include that sort of northern section? So the activity zone of mixed use incorporates all that?
That's what they, they've done over in Durham, I think, Duke University? Maybe UNC Hospital, I forget, one of the hospitals over there. They have the high-tech companies over there, they have the Whole Foods stores over there, they have like a lot of mixed use.
Yeah.
Condos, townhouses, retail, a lot of tech, it's a very techie area, but it has the retail over there too now.
So that, and then we presented that to the consultant and said, you know, what would it take to kind of tweak the maps if the board had decides to go in that direction and included that their proposal for the added service comes to about $8,500 to tweak some of their maps to incorporate if we saw that area as, as more of a-
That's what bugs me. You know, they drew it the way they wanted to draw it and without any input and then we're going to pay $8,000 for them to-
Tell us more.
Once we get input, they're gonna, we gotta pay them $8,000 to redraw it.
So I think sometimes, I thought the fire department did this as well, not the fire department, but the consultants. Didn't they have something where as if it needed to be tweaked, it was not going to be an additional charge? I'm pretty sure that that's what one of the, I don't know if that was when we picked, but they did say like if they had to make changes on it, I could have sworn there was not a fee to that, even though it's, you know, apples and oranges. But I thought that's how it was set up. Am I wrong?
They're going to be doing some other stuff for us and tweaking it to finalize the report. This was just something that involved a lot of the maps and bubble diagrams changing.
So how do you determine what's buildable? I saw that in quotes on a slide previously.
Yes.
So when I think of buildable, I think of feasibility.
Right.
And so what did we pay for? Because I can draw, I can draw boxes.
Yeah. So you can see-
I'm sure they have, I'm not insulting them, but what I'm saying is to the mayor's point, you know, we got to pay you for another iteration of the story. Well, what are you giving us for the initial dollars that we paid you? Because I would think there's some feasibility. Are you just sticking those boxes there? What was done to show that it's truly buildable?
Right. And it would be best if they were here to kind of answer that, but what you can kind of see, if you go through some of those site analysis maps, you can start to see streams, wetlands. So they're, they're seeing that. And what they also did for us is looked at the, you know, is the path that we had in the community transportation plan, the right path for Fowler Road.
The topography.
Yeah, topography, soils. So they look at all that stuff and the answer that could have come back says, no, actually, guess what, there's an endangered species out here, you guys can't do anything. Or, I don't know, no, the wetlands are too much, it's a, it's a flood zone, you're not going to, nobody's going to be able to build out here. Or the rock is just too crazy, you know. So again, it's-
They walked these sites?
It's high, no, it's very high level.
They drilled some holes?
Nope, it's high level, so it's-
So they looked at maps?
Right. And what they did so that you, so they won't, you won't see a building on like a wetland, for instance, you can see kind of up on this site. So they're taking that into account. I don't know, here's a pointer. So this is, you know, they're not putting a building here because there's a reason. This area is not buildable or developable. So there's one map in the report that shows the buildable acreage. So it breaks out all the sites and a site might say the whole parcel is 25 acres, but then right next to it, it says buildable area and might say 17 acres of buildable area.
Gotcha.
So they're looking at things like that and all this stuff. Right here, this is a stream crossing where if Fowler Road gets extended someday, it's going to be costly. And you notice there's no buildings around here. So they do do some of that to some extent, high level. And if we do ever pick a site or a landowner comes in and says, I want to sell and I want to work with you guys and let's look at my 200 acres I have or 50 acres, we would have to do this again just for that site and drill down and do all that.
Right.
And that's part of that site certification program where you get to a point where you're able to say to somebody, this, all the due diligence has been done, here's a, here's a certified site that checks off 15 or 20 different things for Roseville to then market out to the development world and hey, this is shovel ready, we've done this already. But yeah, this, this study here is really just high level, kind of answering that question, yes or no? And the answer came back is yes, it's doable, there's, there is some buildable acreage, not all of it.
I have a question for that, actually for David. So was this pretty much the conversation that was going on in planning about two months ago when they were picking out or choosing or this, this was being discussed at a planning board meeting two months ago when I kept asking the questions?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not sure who asked the question, but again, this is all based on industrial and nothing else? Because they were saying it was the best use and I kept hearing high level, but I really wasn't sure of that definition either.
No, the, the plan has different uses within the, within the whole plan that's set out in one of the maps. So there are areas that are more focused toward the activity center, things that might be mixed use. There was a site that was designated by the, by the company as actually most appropriate for residential, in fact. There are areas that look like larger potential industrial recruitment sites or certified sites that might be industrial. Industrial, obviously, in 2022 is a loaded term. What does that mean, right? The days of smoke stacks and in coal-fired support for the factory really aren't what we see being attracted here to the triangle. GlaxoSmithKline was mentioned earlier as a manufacturing site, the pharmaceutical manufacturing site. Those might to your eye, when you drive by, look like a technology facility, but actually inside, you have clean room standards and things are being manufactured. That is industrial zoning, but it is not, it's not driving through 1956 Pittsburgh.
Okay, so may I have a question for Commissioner Sutton? You and I took a ride one day, remember? Where, what was that? That was considered just industrial?
Where?
It was off of Roseville Road?
Was it on Jonesville Road?
Okay, so-
Or Roseville.
We did Roseville Road, then we made a left. I'll fix it, maybe fix, yeah.
Fowler Road.
So that was industrial?
Right now it's not.
But what was it, what was the, the permit, what was the?
I think it's just residential right now.
No, I thought it was like industrial or something you said, not right now, the few, the plan for, was to cut through?
The proposed Fowler Road. Right, but it was, yeah.
So this was what we were talking about, yeah. I was just showing you where it would cut through.
Right, which was very odd cut through, but okay. Because I guess if we saw, is it, is it ever possible to see some live footage, like some, what is the little birdie thing called again?
The drone?
Yes, thank you. Is it possible that we could ever see some of the drone footage of this? Like, I just need to see some of this because it throws me off a little bit.
Sure, I think we probably have to pay for it, but we could have somebody get a drone out there and do some of that. I don't know if this company does that or-
Oh my God, it's going to be expensive. So that's, that's, I was just asking.
We might want to wait till we have a better idea of where exactly, you know, this is a large 1,100, 1,100, yeah, acres, a site, you know, very large study area. We kind of just, you know, looked at this whole area, but when it comes down to it, it might be just, you know, 50 acres here or 25 acres there that we're really going to hone in on later depending on interest. And so that might be when we want to, you know, do that.
I would just have to see how it, how it plays against the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Because where we went and she was showing where the cut, the proposed cut is, I really, it was a little challenging trying to picture that because of the residential that was over there as well. I mean, we see this, but this is-
Right. And this, and this is, it's not a plan that you might, you know, it's, it's just a study and a report that, that can lend in, you know, help influence future planning efforts. I think that's where the consultants are coming from too. They, they presented one vision based on their initial analysis, but there's 100 of these, 100 visions. So, you know, they make a point to say, you know, even though they put some buildings on some parcels like they are, that doesn't mean that, you know, that's how the future's going to unfold. But it's, you know, up to us, kind of the board, to what extent do we want to, you know, when we have those conversations with future developers in the development world that want to come to Roseville and say, here's what I want to do, to what extent? Just like, I mean, currently we do that to, you know, with our current comprehensive land use, our comprehensive plan and our future land use map right now. Again, this area already has mixed use designation and business park designation. And one of the first kind of recommendations from the consultants in the study is to look at our comprehensive plan and look at this area again when we do an update and say, well, is there anything from here that we like that we want to incorporate? Or, you know, maybe not, maybe, maybe we can keep it as it is, mixed use and business park. We have some new zoning classifications like business and technologies, a new zoning classification in our LDO, I think that might fit in this area.
So it wasn't necessarily the highest and best use, it was what could possibly work that we don't already have?
Yeah, they looked at commer, well, non-residential and, and industrial feasibility for that to take place. And again, doesn't mean it might not be costly and things have to be done and infrastructure has to be brought to these places.
Yeah, and see, that's, that's one of the things, and it's, some of the meetings I've been in with the consultants brought up several times, even the homeowners that own some of this property, I think number 28 brought it up, is who pays for the road and how do you get the road in there? Because when you, if you go to Zeppelin, these big places you talk about in Zeppelin, they're right off of Highway 64. They're right off there. Big trucks get off Highway 64 and go in there, they're right off of there. Somehow we got to put roads in to get the big trucks to the big buildings. And, you know, and, and he didn't have an answer on how do you pay for that or who pays for that? Because developers said they can't pay for that.
Right.
Can't, or what?
They can't. I mean, the land won't say, in other words, the land won't say. If you sell two, $2 million worth of land and you got to put a $3 million road in, they'll go somewhere else is what, is what that, that particular landowner was saying. And I guess that's what we need to know is how do you, as Commissioner Sutton said, how you make it feasible in that way?
Yeah, and I think sometimes if, if there is interest from industry or somebody we want to see, I think there's an instance where, you know, towns pitch in and they help, you know, it's a development agreement where we, you know, if we see the future tax revenue coming in, if we see $1.5 million in potential annual tax revenue coming in, are we willing to pitch in to build some of the road or help with some of the infrastructure to get that? Because we see, we see that over the next 20 years, a GlaxoSmithKline or a Securus is going to bring that tax revenue. If we don't think that's feasible, then-
Yeah, my understanding, this road is pretty wide, ain't it? Ain't it four lanes with two bike lanes and a side pass and just like 100 and-
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the comfort-
It's a Cadillac.
Yeah.
Wait, that's what you're saying, that we would need there?
That's what is in the plan.
That's the plan.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So if somebody come today, want to develop, that's what they got to put in, if I remember correctly. It's not a, it's not a-
Yeah.
It's not a two-lane road.
So the expectation is the town would pay for that? Is that what they are?
Well, that's what, that's what the landowner was asking is how, if they, if they want to sell the land and put this in there, who would put the road in?
So we use Granite Falls Boulevard as an example. Smaller road, right? But we're still waiting for it to be built, right? Developer doesn't want to build it, we don't have the money to build it. So Fowler Road, even bigger, I think we have to answer those questions, you know, how feasible is it?
Right.
Will you get that development? Will you get that Glaxo coming in or whoever it might be? But my other concern is you designate all of this area and then are you battling landowners? Because they are wanting to sell their land. I just need to see there be more flexibility so that if- Right, so that it's not in stone, like this is done.
Right.
Because that becomes a problem.
I agree, yeah. And that's all it is, it's a, it's one vision. They, these consultants, we asked them to see if this was possible. Here's what they said based on their knowledge. I think if you, you know, we got to decide too, if we don't do anything, do we allow, this will all get eaten up by residential? So are we okay with that instead? Because that's who's knocking on the doors of these programs right now.
And I think it's somewhere in between. I don't think it's an all or nothing proposition. I do think this is giving us one vision, but I think this board has to figure out kind of what's the good or at least decent mix that we can come up with for now. But I am concerned when consultants start asking for more money and we still don't really have a product, a true product, in my opinion. Because tell me something's buildable, I want to know that, what's the feasibility behind that?
I feel a good part of it is already in comprehensive land use plan as, as business park, I think is the way we described it.
Yep.
Commercial corridor.
Commercial corridor.
But the, but the plan was business park, if you look at the color, I think it said business park. I may be wrong about that.
The common plan calls this whole spot the commercial corridor. It's supposed to be reserved for this type of use.
Right.
Right.
25 to 50 year, 50-year plan. You need to start somewhere.
Michael, can you go back to that other drawing where you had it circled?
Yeah.
I think it was the last.
You say, Kelly, there will be.
There will be conflicts.
Oh, yeah, of course.
So was the business corridor, was that always included as a part of the business corridor? Because I don't remember that.
This up here.
That red circle.
Right, this was not.
No, yeah, okay.
Are you sending that up there as a natural piece?
I got you.
Yeah.
I got you, yeah.
And, and I think it was, I think it identifies mixed-use neighborhood in the future.
Which piece are you referring to?
Where the red circle is, the big red circle. Because I don't remember that being a part of that commercial corridor. But I like the mixed-use idea better. And then one last question for me is, we keep talking about build-ready sites or whatever the terminology is.
Yeah, shovel-ready.
Shovel-ready, do we have any? Will this, will we, will we ever have any?
I think this is the start because we're able to start to say, and work with landowners and somebody that might be willing to sell or partner and, and work with us and say, yes, I have 50 acres and.
So when you say they sell, help, help me understand that, I'm trying to understand the process.
Yeah.
So is the town buying the site and getting it ready?
That's one option. If the town has money, that would be a good way to control the land.
Right.
Similar to how the town had the land before selling to Cobblestone. You, you start about that process years ago and you start to say, hey, this is an area where we want to see a life sciences facility that has high-paying jobs and brings a lot of, so we're gonna buy this. Or there's other, and I'm not too versed in this, and maybe our attorney can help in the real estate world, just, I think one of the recommendations in there is like, you, you, you work with a nonprofit agency like Redac was, where they have more flexibility and they can buy land or hold land through options, maybe for a couple of years, and, and you're getting agreements with landowners to say, at this price, we'll buy this from you in three years, we just can't now, but we'll pay for some of that to get it ready. So then we're marketing it now as a site that's certified. And then the idea is, within that three-year period, we've sold it and, and from that sale, that's paying for some of that cost. But again, it's, it's conversations with landowners who, who are willing to wait. And some said they were patient and they liked this plan and.
Right, there's a mix.
Others, you know, if you're, you know, getting on an age and you want to sell and your kids don't want the land, they're, they're trying to sell it and residential developers are knocking on the door. And so do we let, do we want that to happen? Or, you know, and that's part of, you know, one of the questions I had, you know, just in seeking guidance, you know, we're having these conversations with, with people that are coming and asking, you know, in light of this study, you know, can I, should I be submitting plans? I have an idea for this, this land, so.
You have.
You had some interest?
Who, who having those conversations?
Potential buyers are interested in some of these properties and they're kind of wondering, well, is this what, you know, they look to our plans, they look at our community transportation plan, they look to our comp plan, they say, well, what does the town want there?
But have you had actual interest? In any, anything on here?
Yes, I mean, I, I mean.
I mean, you have to tell me what, I'm just wondering if there has been.
Real offers or?
Right.
Nothing actual real offers, it, it starts with conversations, but.
Sure, of course.
People that are interested, developers that are interested to do things, they're like, all right.
But non-residentially?
Yes.
Okay.
Just anxious, just talk.
Yes.
But that's where it all begins?
Right. I mean, I got, you know, I got some phone calls from a logistics company over the past few months that were, was looking to locate off of 401 in this area. And we talked, had a few phone calls, but, and I just kind of mentioned this study that, you know, it's in process. But that's it, then it kind of ends, if, you know.
So once we figure this out, this vision, whatever this looks like, because it sounds like there's some concerns from the entire board. But once we figure out what that looks like, and then someone expresses interest, say, whatever company comes, that site is still not ready.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So then what happens? Like, does someone want a site that's not ready? I'm thinking, no.
If it's gonna, depending on how they do their pro forma and look at their financials, they might say, hey, $2 million to drop on this road is nothing because we're gonna be bringing in millions of dollars. Or they might say, hey, that's, you know, I'm, they might approach the town and say, I'm, you know, would you guys be able to share this, cost of this road with us? Would you guys be able to share the cost of this infrastructure to bring water and sewer? Here's what we would be bringing to the town, kind of an economic development agreement where you're, you're starting to talk about. And if the town felt that it was something that's valuable to the town and the general interest of the town, you know, that's where you start to think about incentives in that regard.
They could do that now though, couldn't they?
Right, right.
This just puts together a plan that you can put out there and market to folks and say, we've designated this.
I think, I think the development world wants to know, can I build another 500 homes there off of Roseville Road someday? Is that what the town wants? Or, so, so they're coming in and asking and talking to these people that are, that own the land and. But if I go to Roseville, are they gonna approve that or are they not gonna approve it? What is, what does Roseville want to see there? What if I do mixed-use instead, would that be okay? Or what if I bring in industrial, would that be okay? So as I have those conversations with different interested parties that are, that are kind of looking at Roseville, the plans are there for guidance, and then this could be something that also helps with our planning efforts to some extent. Again, their vision, the consultant's vision, won't happen exactly like it's there, and they, they understand that as well. And they, they make a point to say that in the plan, that this is one of many. But it just starts to give a roadmap for what could be there if Roseville's interested in attracting.
And if we don't have a plan, developers will plan for you. So either we come up with a plan, whether it's this or some variation of this. Or they're gonna keep bringing things that they want to do, not necessarily that we, we want. So this gives them kind of a roadmap to say, this is what they're interested in as a town.
Similar to our future land use map, already does, you know, hey, this is what we, we wanted low density in this area over here. We, we're okay with high-density residential over here, but we're not okay with, it helps them when they're, before they start to spend money on engineers and planners and.
Just if I may, this whole effort has reconfirmed for me that we need to reserve some commercial growth area. Because if you look at the rest of Roseville, there's not any segments like this that's close to transportation or ability. And again, it could be five, 25, 50 years. But if we don't do anything, you're right, we may just be here denying residuals. Now, I want to ask you this question, board. If you look at the report, if you wouldn't mind going to page 38. In the report, it's not, it's on the page 38 in, online.
You said 38?
Yep, it's a map called land use. Let me see if it's hard copy here. Hard copy in here.
The map called land?
Land use, keep on going up. Keep on going up. Keep on going up.
Page 23 of the study.
There we go, that one. So this to me is the crux map, right? This is the land use map. Everything else kind of lays out how you could use this map. This ultimately would be the map or the guide for your comp plan amendment or adjustment in the future. And what I'm hearing, what I've heard consistently and what I'm hearing tonight is that purple entryway, if you turn that to light blue.
On the left side or the right side?
Left side. Off of 401.
Light blue meaning Chapel Hill or what?
Light blue meaning on the, on the, on the legend.
I know, it's hard to see.
Activity center mixed use. Okay? Which accommodates a lot of different things.
But isn't that the site that doesn't want to sell?
I wouldn't say that.
You didn't say that?
I did not say that.
No, I know you didn't say it, but I'm asking.
I don't think anybody has said that.
Okay, so.
The purple?
The purple also contains part of site two, which I thought I read where she says she wanted to keep that property and eventually move, build a house. And a whole bunch of them are related to each other over there.
Okay, but, but we could have that conversation with any site. My, my point is, if you want to go with what they're saying, that's fine, we could spot this. But if you did a blue on this, then they obviously can come in, change it, or they can do whatever you need to do during a comp plan adjustment or amend it. But if you change that to the light blue, that gets rid of this, what I consider potential concern of industrial business park purple there. You may want to make the whole entire thing blue, light blue, and get rid of all the purple. Maybe that's of interest. Maybe we ask consultant, what happens if we make the entire, everything light blue? Can you accommodate some level of industrial purple?
When you say the entire, are you talking about that purple segment?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the whole map. If, is, is purple the concern? I'm, I'm really trying to break it down to, it may be too basic.
You're just trying to make it non-residential, basically.
Correct.
It could be business park, it could be mixed, well, mixed use, mixed use is not, not what you call residential, you know?
Activity center mixed use probably has some residential components. And it probably could also be more easily translated to industrial for industrial purposes.
And I think, I wish we had a current land use, because I don't think we far from that.
Probably not.
I don't think.
What I'm trying to do is not spend the money that I'm hearing you're not interested in doing too much in. But a lot of good work has been done here, a lot of good effort's been here. And it may not be the level of detail that ultimately we're gonna need, because it won't. That was not what we asked for in the, in the study. What we asked for was a study of the commercial corridor for the comp plan. And then we added that purple that I'm talking about on 401 to the study and ask if it's feasible, how would you lay things out in there? The conclusion is, yes, all that area has some feasibility, didn't say when. It said, there's, it says there's lots of infrastructure needs and such in there. And you can do these kind of layouts. Maybe our scope, we should have not, we should have not been as specific saying, how would you lay this out? Because I think we're getting stuck a little bit on layouts of buildings. But it does give you some good guidance where a road could go, where you could lay out some buildings potentially down the line. We could segment these out over time. So for instance, if you were to say this, if this study's done, we make these changes to this map, and now we're ready to focus on area, some designated area, and put our effort onto that. Then we could go into the next level of how do you start brokering, putting together, getting something together on that, and make that your priority area for development. And to me, that purple area and the entryway in town is probably the easiest compared to Young Street.
So real quick again, the, the road on the bottom of the orange, purple, whatever, which road is that?
That is, that is 401.
No, keep going up, right there, that's 401 right there? Okay. And there's a bypass.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, and that's what tonight's about, right?
I'm just thinking about what you're saying there. You know, in, in this board options, you got one of these options, which I think could be kind of difficult for us to do. But then it says, one key next step is update comprehensive land use plan and future use plan. So why don't we use this? It's not a, it's not a document that we've approved. Use some of that stuff to look at our comprehensive land use plan and see where we need to tweak it to, to make sure, I think, I think our intent, I know your intent, you said was to find feasibility. But I think one, also one intent, I kind of hear discussion here, is to keep residential from eating it up, right? Is that what I was hearing?
Right.
For me.
Right. So I think the land use plan can do that, right? The land use plan can, can do that.
Yes, yes. I think it'd be, I would think it'd be helpful though for you to do something with this study.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, you use it to.
Well, I was, I guess what I'm asking you to actually acknowledge it, accept it, accept it, so that you have something that we can give. So there's, there's a declaration of something, your intent, what to do with this study, right? Maybe that's what you do, is you say, whatever that intent is, and we want this to be further included, embedded out in our comp plan amendment that we're gonna use next year. But there, there, there is a lot of good work here that he should be using when Business A comes or whomever comes or landowner has that can say, I'm interested in doing something here. And there's demographics, there's everything in here, and I guess what I would say, I'd like to be able to have this be an active.
The only thing I would want though is it to be used where we got commercial to want to come somewhere and it says you can't do it because it's a business park.
I understand, that's what I'm trying to say.
That's the main thing that, you know, if we adopt this, it can very well happen.
Well, so that's what I'm saying tonight, you could direct us to tell them, change the colors. As simple as that. Because that's, that's an easy thing. And if they come back and say you can't, we'll tell you, or they say that's a good idea, we can. But that's, that would be then, this is your study, you're right. This needs to say what you want it to say. If you don't like this map, I don't want you to do, I don't want this to continue, I don't want this plan. I want, I want you to get it right for you, what you all want.
If I may, just very quickly, O'Brien Atkins was retained to generate a feasibility study rather than a regulatory plan. This document would be different if we had asked them to help us with a comprehensive plan or a future land use map. Rather, this was a question to them, look, if you just could pie in the sky, what is feasible if we were to build Fowler Road? The answer to that question, in the opinion of the land planners and architects at O'Brien Atkins, is this. This is their answer to that question rather than the board's answer to that question. So you can accept their opinion, but you have not adopted it as an action of the town. Rather, you could accept it and instruct the staff to use this, as the mayor suggests, as a tool in bringing forward amendments to the comprehensive plan. That would be the path, but this is not, this should not be something used to scare a property owner and say, sorry, you can't do that because O'Brien Atkins says something is feasible here. That's different. But the title is feasibility study, and I, I know that Mr. Nichols was adamant that he was not hired to write a new comp plan. Rather, he was hired to tell us what's feasible. Former Commissioner Wilson was concerned that we would build a road and it wasn't feasible to build anything next to the road. That was my recollection is one of the triggers for this. What we now know is, in the opinion of an architect and a land planning firm, it's feasible to get something out of the road and out of this land. But the vision for that is still gonna have to be your vision in the comp plan and the zoning ordinance, which is the LDO.
So when I think of a feasibility study, in layperson's terms, Sheila's not an attorney or engineer or land planner. But I use the farm as the example. So we bought 116 acres, there was no feasibility study, right? Once it was done, only about 65% of the land was developable or buildable upon, right? So that's what I think of when I think of feasibility study. And when I look at these maps and they're saying things like potential stream, that to me is not the same thing as a feasibility study. Potential stream says to me, there may be a stream, right? We see something that looks like a stream. But what, what can I do with that actual land? If I go to buy an actual house, I want to see my actual house, not a picture of what could potentially be. That's the difference to me.
Right. To back up a second, and I, this may be a different discussion. This is a massive 30,000-foot view of what's feasible along the corridor. There will be in the future the necessity of all those normal real estate diligence items that happen at the site plan level. And we, we have a lineup in the planning department right now and with the TRC of folks trying to determine whether something is a stream or not. That is literally a fight with people getting their feet wet. It's, it's that level of precision. So you would never really get it at the, at this. So you would never really get it at the, at this level, you can just use the public GIS record.
The term doesn't work for me, though.
Yeah, the feasibility is.
I'm thinking of.
Feasibility of, could you do something in this corridor, or is this just a fantasy?
Well, but also, you know, the devil's in the details sometimes. You know, it says, it says in this feasibility study, if we adopt it, is update future land use map to reflect the commercial growth feasibility study area. So what it's saying is, if we adopt this, then we need to change our comprehensive plan to reflect this, right?
And you will go through that process. So imagine it gets kicked to the planning department. Planning department uses this plan, the new comprehensive transportation plan, and brings back to the board a different job, a different agenda item, which will be a regulatory choice. And you'll say, do we want to use these future land use labels? Do we want to consider a general rezoning of certain areas? And you'll make a decision, yes or no. But until you have the feasibility study, you don't know whether it's worth spending staff resources to even try that. And without the feasibility study, you've, you've sent the planning department sort of off into space without any idea as to what might be realistic.
And that's when you have the formal public comments to help you make those decisions as part of that process.
I'll say my concerns.
So if we were to adopt this, whatever, for Michael's use, then he would just basically be telling people, this is a concept that our town has.
Until adopted through the comprehensive land, comprehensive plan.
Yeah, it gives you an idea what they're looking for. This isn't specific, this is an idea.
Yeah.
Of what we might be looking for in this area. We're not, we're not looking for 1,000 houses here. We're looking for something commercial or industrial, or this or that.
I would ask the town board to refrain from adopting this, and rather to receive it, and then perhaps provide additional instruction. And we refer it to the planning department, we refer it to the economic development department. Receive and refer rather than adopt, because it's not a regulatory document, and we don't want anyone here to be bound to this, as we're not to that level.
But I do like what Kelly said earlier about the purple turning to blue. Just to make sure we're clear on that.
And that, that, that's the feedback we're asking tonight. If there's something you see that you would like us to have modified, and the consultant says, fine, then that should change. And then if he says not, fine, we may have to come back to you and say, here's why, or not. But, but I don't see a problem with making purple blue.
And what is a commercial highway district? What is that? Is that a gas station? I, I don't know what that means.
That can be like a hotel, too.
It was a hotel. The red was a hotel.
Yeah, hotel, stuff that would.
Be right against the highway, I got you, I'm with you.
I have a quick question, I'm kind of digressing just a little bit. So with that zoning that Sheila just mentioned, so you can even have restaurants on the road, but do we have anything that limits the height of signage on the highway? And I ask that question because, for example, what is the little country cracker barrel? You know, when they come in, they want to put a sign that's 100 feet high. So do we have any limitations yet in our LDO about that? Because it, it could happen.
We do have a sign ordinance, which regulates size and height.
Even on the highway?
On the bypass?
Within the, within the town.
Okay.
And within the ETJ.
I didn't know if it included the highway or that, okay, all right, thank you.
So one thing I wanted to point out, since I am a Parks and Rec liaison, is if you look at this map real quick, just to keep this in mind, sites six and nine, which are on the one side of this map, are right below site one. And if you go to the opposite side, sites 26 and 24. Okay. Both of these landowners mentioned preserve the natural environment. And one, I'm also says, open to working with the town for future park, open space site. So I feel like we need to keep that in mind, like, they're open to that, that should be part of our plan in the, in the long term, too, is once, once it's gone, it's gone. So if you have people and property that are willing to work with us, that we also need to look at that, too.
Site six, and what was the other site?
Six and nine.
Nine.
Yep.
Nine's going to be a battle. You have a bunch of different family members that own that property.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Right. Just wanted to put it out there.
Nine is in the hotels, though. Potential, potential. Can I have a park in the front of it?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Anything else, Michael?
So, so if I may, Mayor, can I try and, I don't know if I've got a summary.
I was going to direct, I was going to direct everybody to page three, which is page seven out of 146. But you're welcome to reflect, whatever.
No, I just. To the options on Michael's emails, is that memo, is that what you're, right? I did like, so, Michael, I don't mean to take this away, I'm not trying to, so I want to make sure you're okay with what we're saying. Are you okay with everything to date that's been said as far as tonight? Do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
No, I guess just, is that the way we're going forward? With, is that what we're about to, yeah, just clarification on moving forward, specifically with what our next acts would be of the consultants, and then.
I guess what I hear you say is include option two and three?
I, I, I heard you say you didn't support spending more money on two, and what we would do is direct them to come back and change to purple to blue, without any further work on the study, right? Because I don't think they're supportive, spend more funds on that.
Two spends money?
Yes.
I didn't read, I didn't, I didn't take it as spend.
See, see attached proposal? They, they would want to take which the idea is and kind of do the same layout of buildings. I don't think we need that.
Well, I would just say it's a reword, two to return site one.
Mm-hmm.
In the color?
Blue.
Yeah.
In initial conversations, too, that, does that mean?
Where's the mixed use at, then?
That is mixed.
That is, yeah.
What?
The blue is mixed use. That's one.
Oh, I'm sorry, got you, okay, 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 I'm sorry.
So I don't know how simple it'll be, we could ask, so right now they have a, a purple building, 410,000 square feet, so. On a separate map, do we want that building to become blue? A large, all these large buildings?
I'm looking at this.
Yeah, I, I think we.
This area, which includes all of those purple buildings.
Right. I think we don't have them do any work more, spend any more money, is what I'm hearing. And, and you can make those blue on the map or something.
Right.
But what I'm saying, what I'm hearing is, they don't, they, being the board, does not want to spend money to lay out that site anymore. They want mixed use, which I, is fine with. It could be those sized buildings, or it could be some, some other mix.
Because didn't you, attorneys say that with, with the option, if it's mixed use, we would have the option of having something larger in those buildings? Did I hear that correctly?
Say that again, I can't hear you.
But.
I asked if he said, if I was correct in what I thought he said, with that being mixed used, we would still have the option of having those as larger buildings.
It would be my expectation that the direct link, link between page 38, this, this sheet here, and a regulatory document would be the future land use map in the comp plan. That document is a, a planning document, but again, is not the same as the zoning map ordinance. So no one gets any rights to do something just because it's in the comp plan. Rather, that, that sends the message to the world that the board has adopted a plan, this is what we endorse. And you're still entitled to bring forth any plan you wish, but, you know, we, we wish you all the best if you bring forward something that's not in alignment with the town's vision. And certainly, we all have experience where someone has brought forward something that was inconsistent with the comp plan, and the town thought it was reasonable and approved it, even though it was different. The mixed use idea likely doesn't align with 400,000-square-foot industrial-sized buildings. You'll see the, the blue areas, or, I don't know if that's blue, or teal, or Carolina Panther, something. The, they tend to be smaller and distributed spaces with green space in between, and distributed parking, and tend to be mixed use vertical. But again, that would be only at the comp plan level, and when someone came forward with a zoning case, you would have a different decision to make. The, I would throw out, just from a background in industrial recruitment, if we do not have purple along 401, those are the cheapest industrial sites, those are the most obvious to my eye sites for that kind of a use. They are going to be the cheapest to develop, they require the least amount of extension of infrastructure. Roseville Road would be, as I believe the mayor raised, more of a challenge to bring heavy vehicles and will require additional road infrastructure. So if you forego purple in the north, you, you may, the idea being the vision is a gateway, right? You don't want to have that use in the gateway. You may delay your opportunity for industrial, for true purple, if you will, to some time long in the future, 20 years or something like that.
But we do know, commercial, they want that visibility, they want to be there. They don't want to be on Roseville Road either. I mean, commercial.
When you say commercial, like, give me an example of what you mean by commercial? Best Buy?
Yeah.
A Walmart?
Yeah.
She's talking about retail commercial.
Yeah.
But if you're talking about industrial, you're talking about more of the plants.
So industrial is, is.
Biomedical.
Every for-profit company in 2022 would like to have some visibility, that's an asset. But the, the commercial retail, obviously, visibility from high thoroughfare is one of the number one considerations. That's not true for industrial. For mixed use, it's somewhere in the middle. I would throw out that I believe the characteristic of Roseville Road and Young Street is changing, that that will not always be pure residential and rural. There will be commercial mixed in with that, given the rooftops we're seeing. And that's highly visible.
And on the flip side, Ronnie, you said that you would hate for, like, a Trader Joe's or someone to be, not come because of how it's, I would hate for a Glax, someone like a Glax, you know, Glaxos, not come because of how it's.
If it's all blue.
Yeah, how it's shaded on the map, so to speak, you know what I'm talking about.
The, the economic development cliche is you can't sell from an empty cart.
Right.
So if you don't have the site, you won't be on the site selection team's list for a visit. You just won't. You will never know that something came into Wake County, because the only person who's ever going to find out is probably Mayor Curran at a, at a mayor's association meeting, and it will be long too late.
Be done.
So if, if there was a.
We, we get all those.
If there is a way, if there is a way to identify a site, if that's of interest to the board, you might want to find one.
I know, but doesn't she still do that, though?
We get, we get requests, we get requests for information from companies that come through the state economic development partnership, and they, they filter them down to Wake County.
County economic development.
If, if companies are looking to locate in North Carolina or Wake County, then those, those email, those requests for information get sent out to all the municipalities. And then if a municipality has a site based on that request, the request might say, company X is looking for 182 acres, a building that's already built, and it's got a ceiling height of, it's got to be, you know, 36 feet high, or, and, and a few other, you know, things that they're looking for, sewer, power. So those come in monthly.
Well, once a week.
Yeah, right. And they just kind of.
I didn't see much on the power piece. It wasn't a.
Yeah, I have to check to see if one of these is power.
So Michael, can you, can you do all this by yourself? It sounds like a lot of work.
I.
And when I look at our residential and our commercial split, as far as compared to other municipalities, we are way down on that list, 92 and 8, I didn't even know it was that low. I thought it was better than that. So realistically, we're saying we want to develop, you know, non-residential, right? Are we being realistic, because we have one person that's focused on this every day? Maybe Kelly getting pulled in, the mayor getting pulled in, maybe I get pulled in. But realistically, are we trying to achieve something that is unrealistic, because we have one person? I think you've got to be marketing yourself, you've got to be focused on developing these sites so that you have something to market. So I think that we need to think about that as a board, too, because Michael's one person.
We would definitely partner with Wake County Economic Development, and, and they do have a site assessment program that we would, if we have a site in mind, we'd, we'd enter that program, and they'd give us more feedback, and.
But you're, you're spot on, I mean, and now, this year, in next year's budget, both Wendell and Zebulon are adding economic development specialists.
Yep.
So everybody's in the game now.
Yep.
Every Wake County community has a Michael, will have a Michael, minimally one.
Because I, just speaking from my own jobs in the past, I know people can say, oh, you can do this and this and that.
Yeah.
You can't do it all. You can't do it all. So if we really want to put some proactivity, you know, I feel like Michael is taking the incoming, but who's working on the outgoing?
Who's courting them?
Huh?
Who's courting them?
Who's courting them?
That's what you have to do, you have to court them.
Exactly. So I think we need to think about that, when I look at the staffing structure and I look at how we compare to other municipalities. I did not know it was 92 and 8, like, that was.
It's been that way for years.
I thought it had gone up a little bit.
It's continued to be less.
Yeah.
It used to be, we used to be 10 or 12.
It used to be 10, right? Okay.
It was pine glow.
Oh, yeah, that's true. So that's another thing to think about.
Right. So last, maybe, Mayor, do we have consensus on what you want to see in the land use map?
Can I ask one question before you answer that? So that, that purple section up there, so the proposed buildings on this, on that one, could that section up there that you're saying changed blue, could that be split? To at least have one area up there that maybe, like, way the one furthest away from 401, that way up there, so that if something came through, we could say, we do have that property for you? I mean, of course, it still depends on the property owners.
Yeah, I, I think what you will see on that piece of property is one development, one large mixed-use development.
Or one commercial development, is what I'm thinking. If it's the furthest away from 401, there's got to be trees and all that stuff in there. So it's not going to be visible right away, is, I'm thinking, I have not been out there, but I'm thinking. I'm just thinking, is there a way that we could accommodate any call that came in tomorrow? Just to say, we do have a property to take you to, to take a look at.
Today, you can't get to it.
I was going to say, how you going to get to it? By helicopter.
But we would have this, we would, it would be an option, instead of waiting 25 years down Fowler Road, which we don't even have yet.
I think the consultant said on the night of the call, the, the first things to start working on is, like, from Roseville Road and build it back to the two rivers, because then the two river crossings is going to be hard to cross. But you can do each end of the river crossing, so you could do, you could do this end down there, and that end there.
Yeah, and they can provide a phasing plan to some extent, if we want to see that as well.
So you're saying start on that end?
Well, either, it has to start on either end, so.
But the industrial, where it's designated here, the purple is towards Roseville Road versus the bypass.
So I guess it would depend on what the call, what call came in. If it was an industrial call, it would be on that end.
Where is Jonesville Road at? So you could start purple there.
That's what I was looking at, could you?
Yeah. Yeah, that was one suggestion to the consultant, was to make everything south purple.
Everything south?
Then north, north of the line, mixed use more.
Mm-hmm.
That makes more sense. That makes.
I don't think it made sense to them, did it?
They were just tasked with trying to find land where this would, where these industrial sites would fit. So if we said something different, we said, well, we don't want industry at all, they would have looked at just mixed use, but they saw that they really liked this rectangular site. But they saw that they really liked this rectangular site that's almost 92 acres and the site that's almost 300 acres, you know, and it's something here. With the task to find out the feasibility of future business park, business and technology and life science, industrial, with demand in the area being for these 200, 100 to 200 acre sites, kind of if a town has, you know, I think they're saying if a town has, has the ability to offer that, a 200 acre site, then you want to reserve it for the highest and best use that would bring in the most tax revenue, which would be something like we saw with a GlaxoSmithKline or a Securus. So that's what they were tasked with, but trying to find that opportunity. And they looked at it all, and, you know, I think Tom Andrew mentions, you know, they said, well, this actually makes more sense to be residential. This is kind of the activity zone. I mean, they have residential here, but this area seemed to be a good area for the business park and then up in here a little bit. But again, not set in stone, just.
Let me clarify one more time. I know you answered this, but I just need to clarify. The way this is colored off, it's colored off by land owner?
Yes, by part, by parcels.
Parcels? And one person owns that particular color or no?
No, it could be a family. They're just the way the land's defined.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
Families own some of these sites, there, so there's like two or three owners.
I got you.
And with some of the sites, one owner owns two or three of them.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
If that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, one of them's the church. And Site 11 is a church.
Are they still open for residential or commercial now?
Who?
The church.
What do you mean?
At one time, they said they didn't want any commercial over there. They said they prefer residential because of what.
I think, I think, I think if you talk to them, they they're open to something. They're not open to what's on that map because it it took everything but the church up on the map there. Only thing left is the church itself, and they said they weren't going to give up that much for sure.
Right. I included their feedback in the.
I'm sorry. Were they, are they open for commercial or do they still want to stick with residential?
Yeah, no, they like the plan. They like the idea of more activity coming to that area, just in general. They did mention that.
I think the mixed use, they like the mixed use.
Yeah, they like, they like it. And they did say that right now, there's a ball field here, I think, and they're okay with that new road coming in, but didn't want to reserve land here for future ballparks and activities for the church. So right here south of where the church is, they like to keep some of that land, but they were open to activity happening, happening in the.
All right, Kelly, you going to try again?
Poor Kelly.
Do you have it?
I, the, so I've, I've talked about tweaking the maps in a simple way before, and the response was that it's not as simple because you do have about five or seven maps that have these larger buildings. So changing a color, I don't think will be received that simple because then if you look at the report, you'll see that the colors changed, and then as soon as you flip to the next map in the report, it's going to show this large 500,000 square foot building. And then you flip to the next map.
Yeah, let's, let's make sure we learn from this, that we'll never get a consultant. We're locked in before the board agrees to what we want on the map, you know?
I'm telling you, I know that's.
I understand.
Let's make sure we don't ever do that, because really.
I like iterations.
Huh?
I don't like one choice. I like, here's three concepts or four concepts.
That's been my suggestion along, is why can't you have option A, option B, option C? We have all these layouts, we've worked through it, and then we, and then we make that choice when we go through the comp plan.
And why can't they still do that?
Well, that's, I think, I think, I think, I think they can, I think they could.
How much, how much was paid to them already?
Plenty, but most everything, Michelle, everything has been. But but I think what we could do is direct them to make the land use map changes that we want and acknowledge in a report that the town board likes the study, but we also want to make sure that we kept our options open for the land use map B, option B or whatever we call, which modified some of these things that did not include amendments to all these layouts. And just do another land use map B or C. Receive it, direct us to start working on the comp plan, and then you make some final decisions during the comp plan update.
And if they say no, what is our next step?
They won't.
We would, we would, we would then write a memo up, and you would make those recommendations in your own report, in your approval of or receiving of this, and say, and we receive this, and we're directing staff to acknowledge that there are a couple other land use maps that we want to make sure are actively engaged during the comp plan, this study.
Michael will work it out.
Yeah. I mean, not to throw another option in here, but we could take out some of these maps, and then they just don't get included. If you don't like, if you feel that one of these, that makes it look like one thing, you just take out those bubble diagrams, and then now you just have the future zoning map in there. And then we're not creating anything new, we're just taking out some of the stuff we don't necessarily want to.
So you're saying there was a price tag attached to each map?
Um, just to, if we wanted to tweak some and change around buildings like these, you know, again, this is that area that if we wanted to go mixed use, you're just, you're just, you know, in that, whatever software they're using, it's not just changing one map, it's changing all the, all the maps.
Well, I mean, because it's going to, it's going to change like your sewage, your water, this or that. It's a different sized building and stuff. It's a, it's a working document. Right. It's, that's what it is. It's not a, it's not a legislative approval document, as Dave has talked about, it's a working document. It was to show what's feasible in there. They have provided you their best opinion of what they how, what they laid out, and you are going to receive that. You may include a lot of it, you may make modifications through the comp plan, and you very well may make a lot of changes when you approve a site plan.
Okay, but if you do one map and that the other maps are affected by that, how do you not include the other maps?
Again, this is their report, not the town's report.
Right.
At most, this will be, O'Brien Atkins thinks this could work. That's all this report could ever mean. We then will go back with staff to bring to you a document for you to adopt to amend the comp plan that will match your vision.
I was saying that they're making these changes, all the maps will be impacted by that change. Are you saying that it doesn't matter, they're going to do it based on it working, but we're only going to see one map?
I think, I think what staff is saying is if if you were to instruct O'Brien Atkins that you would like them to assess the feasibility of something different, that is, please assess the feasibility of not having the industrial uses along 401, now what do you believe is the best feasibility approach? And they would deliver their new opinion as to what is feasible. But again, it still wouldn't be the board adopting anything. It would be just one respected land planning firm's opinion.
I'm not talking about adoption. I'm just talking about the changes that are going to take place that's going to cost more money. So is that?
It will cost more money, I think.
It's going to cost, I get it, it's going to cost, but all I'm saying is how do you get one map without the other to make that decision? Are they going to create the new map and they'll have maps B and C and D, they'll keep that to themselves because we're not paying for that and just show us this?
Let me throw for the board's consideration would be to accept the feasibility study received by O'Brien Atkins and instruct the staff to move forward in the Planning Department and the Economic Development Department with future work, taking into consideration X, for example, mixed use to the north of 401. The study could stay the way it is, but the the instruction to the staff is clear. You're not, you're, we don't, we don't agree with, or even if we do agree it's feasible, it's not our vision. You don't need to amend the, you don't have to amend their opinion for you to move forward.
But but let me just clarify, though, because we have a Main Street Vision Plan that's posted online. And developers have used that and come to us with, well, you have this in your Main Street Vision Plan.
And that was adopted as our vision.
Exactly.
This is not proposed as your vision.
As long as this is not put out on any website where somebody's referencing this.
Correct.
That's what I would have a problem with.
This is not your vision.
Yeah, because I know Main Street is used in addition to.
That's why we need to kind of move it along and start talking through the comp plan on it.
And and now there'll be a, a clear YouTube video forever for everyone to see exactly what the board was thinking about this.
I don't think a lot of people.
You don't watch it all the time? I watch it all the time.
I don't think that works very well.
We'll draft up the thoughts, and we'll bring it back when Dan's here and let Dan watch the video and get caught up. But let's learn from this one, because really, I think, I think several things went wrong. You know, you always get your feedback before you finish something and say, this is final. And.
I think, I think, in retrospect, I think Dave's point is right. Feasibility is their opinion, and that's why they never were able to say this is the town board's opinion. You, you gave a lot of input, you came there, but they came in and always told you what they felt, right? And so in retrospect, I think that's what we scoped. I don't think we asked them to do a report that says you'll adopt it, because we always had many conversations about that, and they resisted that, saying this is not a regulatory map. And so maybe, maybe we oversold it to you all, staff, maybe we didn't quite clear with you all what we were trying to accomplish here. Again, we were trying to make sure that what we had identified as commercial quarter was reasonable to develop and keep in the comp plan as such, and now we know it is. We know how buildings could lay out in there potentially. And now we have something that we can work the comp plan amendment on to make sure we make some final decisions on it.
Yeah, but I think somebody said, maybe Sheila, somebody said, you know, anybody can draw these boxes on here, and it can look 100,000 different ways. So that's, you know, that's just one way they can draw boxes on here.
I understand.
But I, I don't even, I, I count, I forgot, it was several weeks ago. It is a bunch of dead end streets in here, streets that we've already approved, that's been built, that whoever put this together should have considered all our connectivity. Because we, you know, we'll get 10 dead end streets out of this plan if he, if we adopted the way they draw it on the map. And I'm just saying, they could have drawn it better if they, if they considered all that stuff, you know?
Well, I think that's the difference between a feasibility and a design build. Like, I think that's the two different things. We didn't say, design is, we're going to build it this way. We said, let us know if this will work out.
Yes.
So I think you got to take it in mind, like, in mind that that's what it is. It's a, yes, you can do commercial, you can do industrial here. And then we just, we go from there and get more specific and say, all right, now we're looking to do this here and do that there, and that's in the comp plan, and that's in the.
If I remember, Sheila, you sat on the interview team with us and through that. And and I think we were, we were swayed by this group as probably the best as far as their knowledge of economic development. There may have been others that may have been better on some of the other aspects of it, but this was certainly, and and if you talk to folks, their team is probably one of the most respected in Wake County as far as, in this region, as far as economic development, particularly industrial use based. And again, we have shared this with Wake County Economic Development, and they love it because it does show and addresses some very strong deficiencies, they believe, in Wake County, which are some big parcel developments that they believe the county's deficient on, and if there was, and you'll start hearing this more from them, because they came to the managers' meeting last, about a month ago, Eric, and they talked about that. That was an agenda item with the managers, is we need your help to find these large acreages because we're running out of spots for the long term good of Wake County as far as employment centers. So.
I think that was one of my questions, so it was more, and I asked, I asked this at the planning meeting, so it's more Wake County driven than it is Roseville driven? And I remember asking that.
I, I would say it's, it's, it's addressing what they feel are the best opportunities within the areas. It is Roseville driven, but they also know that these would be things that would get more interest within Wake County as partnerships with Wake County Economic Development and such. If you were to have a couple of these sites and say, we'd like to start working towards preparing for these, you would have a lot more interest to do that for a industrial based site than you would for mixed use per se. They don't do commercial, right? They do industrial, they do, they do primary job development.
And they have incentives, have an incentive policy to attract that to the county.
I feel like this is, is, it's still missing a link, and I keep going back to the site readiness, whatever the terminology is. To me, if you don't have that next step, you can write plans all day, you can color maps all day. Until you have someone that's focused on getting those sites ready, partnering with those landlords, and they're spending their days doing that, you still have nothing but drawings.
And that, that again, would be the next.
So I, I'm imploring this board, and it's more than Michael focused on this. Michael didn't know I was going to say this, but looking at those numbers and how we compare to others in the, in the county, in the area, this isn't going to cut it. You've got to have somebody focused on this. I think I sent a video, well, I think Chris Johnson in Johnston County is a good example. I'm sure he has a team out there doing this. It doesn't happen with one person. So we've got to look at that and put some more staff behind this. Board, y'all hear me?
We hear you.
We hear you.
Okay.
I, I think it's been great. I mean, there's no easy answer on this, so it's a good conversation. And Michael, do you have anything else you want to add or?
I think that's it, yeah. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
We'll keep working on it.
Appreciate that.
Long wolf, Michael. Thank you.
Think this, this one may go long, David. I may, may call for a break here.
I think I can keep it super short if you'd like me to shoot at it, but.
Okay, let's shoot at it. If you ain't done by eight, I'm going to call for a break then.
Eight? I'll, I can do better than that.
All right. So number three, Planning Board, Parks and Recreation Board, Advisory Boards, term limits, review arms, amendments. And Dave, you want to lead that discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that has been before the board a, a couple of times in work sessions as a conversation matter, either as the whole board or individual members reaching out to staff. And that is adopting an ordinance change to the town code to employ term limits for our two major appointed boards, which are the Planning Board and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The proposed amendment that is in your package aligns with the instruction that, that I received and the staff received. If this were to be adopted by the board at your next regular meeting, we would impose a two, a two term limit on all board members. Those are three year terms. Currently seated or incumbent members would be eligible for one additional term regardless of how long they had currently been serving. Once you had served out your two full terms, you would be required to sit out one year before being eligible for reappointment. The only other changes you'll see there in the red line are, we have incorporated the student position, that was the high school position to the Parks and Recreation Board. That's not something that is in the town code currently. And also, we brought these two provisions in the town code to date, modernizing those and making the language consistent throughout. Those are technical changes. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those. The Planning Board has received a report from me on this topic, and they all seem to support the concept.
I have one question for the Planning Board. Is the requirement still in effect for those in the ETJ? Is it still a three or did that?
Right, so, well, two part, two part answer. Part one, this applies to all regular board members, that they would be tied to this idea. However, given state statute requiring that Planning Board members be appointed by the Wake County Commissioners, that would not be a term limit we could actually enforce if the Commissioners insisted that they wanted someone to serve a third term. It's my expectation that in the spirit of our request, it's unlikely that the Commissioners would want to keep someone on in perpetuity, but we should keep in mind that that's a possibility that ETJ members could continue to serve, as we would not have the ability to kick them off.
Oh, my gosh, really?
I just, I don't think that's going to happen, but it's out there. In fact, in, in, in some counties, the county commissioners often fail to make the appointments to the Planning Board and leave it to the town. So in that case, they, they would be able to be enforced. The other question was the distribution. This is unrelated to the text amendment before you now, and that is, do we have the appropriate allocation between our in-town members and our ETJ members? I received a report from Meredith Gruber day before yesterday, and looking at the latest census tract information, it looks like we're still in good shape.
All right, thank you.
7:49, sir.
I have a couple questions. Bullet number three. The incumbent, and this is probably legalese, break it down for me.
Yep.
I'm on page 114 online. I don't know what the actual page number is. Incumbent members, it's a long sentence, members of either of these boards as of the day, blah, blah, blah. It's the last part that gets me. For reappointment for one additional three-year term before being term limited.
Right.
What does that mean?
So they would get to serve one more, but then they too would have to sit out. So imagine you had sat on the board for eight three-year terms, you've been on the board for 24 years as of, or let's say 23 years as of today. You would serve one more year, you would complete your term, and because this was adopted while you were serving, as you are, that makes you an incumbent, you would be eligible to be appointed one more time, not two more times, one more time, and then sit out.
So is there a better way to say that? Because that doesn't say that to me.
Well, this is, well, there certainly is, but this is a lawyer's memo. This is not the ordinance. The language inside the text is probably better.
I don't even understand that.
But I, I will take it under advisement, that I could, I could use a, a better writing.
Okay, I didn't understand.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, got you. And so, and then the high school one is codified, meaning, meaning that's what they'll always serve.
Means we wrote it down in the ordinance.
Do your terms.
Fancy word.
Okay, got you. And then my other question, I think you might have answered it. Yep, it was on the Wake County Board of Commissioners. Yep, that was it. Those are my three questions. That's all I got.
There would be no action today. This is an item that I believe would come back on your consent agenda. We don't need a public hearing on this text change, because it's only a change to the town code, rather than being a change to the LDO.
Yeah, I think, any recommendation I would have is, once we get it cleared and done, we'll take it to the, to our meetings and just make sure everybody understands it. So there's no confusion, and three years in, everybody's like, "Why? I don't understand why I can't do this, or I can't do that."
Oh, my God, you don't, you don't want to go through that.
Yeah.
So do you, you have a meeting this month, right?
Uh, we do, but mine, it falls on our meeting in Knightdale with...
Oh. I was going to say, you could, you could, I mean, JG could explain what's happening, so at least you get input in case they have an opinion.
Right. I think ours, I think ours would be fine, but yeah.
Yeah, I thought the parks already had it.
Yeah, we have it in place, but it's not exactly...
Not exactly like that.
The bylaws have a term limit that has not been enforced.
Correct, or formally adopted.
And what if they, what if they...
Or formally adopted.
I lied, I have one more question. What if they don't serve the three-year terms consecutively? Is it still a maximum of three terms? They serve three, they have to fall off for some reason.
Now, you reset. You would reset. If someone wanted to do one, stay off, could come back again if a new vacancy opened up after a year.
And they could do two then?
In theory, if you always wanted to sit one year off, I suppose you could do that forever.
Exactly.
That's why I asked the question, when I looked down.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to imagine someone would want to be on the board that badly, but I suppose.
Really, Dave?
Well, remember, you still get to decide. No one gets to, "I am entitled to come back on the board." That's not a thing.
So it's a one-year reset?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, take a breather.
I think the only other thing we didn't cover was if we don't have somebody to take that spot. I think we talked about that, but...
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
That's right.
So is it, they stay on until, or do we need to get into that?
Well, I had raised it, and, and no one thought that that was a possibility in, in Roseville, so...
Not now. No, I think, I think you have plenty now, but...
If it becomes an issue, I suppose, some, you know, once we're all long gone and no one wants to be on the Parks and Rec Board or something.
And of course, if they're appointed, in the event that someone had to drop off for some reason midterm, then it starts, the clock starts for that person.
You'll notice there is no term limit suggested here in this round for the Board of Adjustment, because that has been a board that has been difficult to find qualified applicants.
All right. I think that's a record for Dave.
So if I hear you're going to do your revisions, and then it's going to be put on an agenda item for future consideration?
Next for you.
And Paul and, and Michelle, y'all want to take it to your boards before we consider it?
Yeah, I'll have to give mine to JG, but we'll get, just in case, there's any, then we could bring it up under consent agenda if we have any issues with it. We could pull it, if we need to talk about it, but I don't think there are going to be issues.
When is your next meeting?
Wednesday?
This coming, or next Wednesday? I didn't see anything on for, I know we, we have ours on the 23rd, right?
Very good.
Okay, so you're going to deliver that, because I'm going to not be in town.